Saturday, and I don't want anyone else to feel that way. It was awful. So, yeah, I took the COVID test, that was new. Um, the meeting is called to order. Secretaries report.
I move to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. Anything else on that?
We are a small group.
Public comments? Is that new?
That is new, yeah. Yeah, it is new. Um, I noticed.
But. Happy to be here. Happy to have you.
Uh, yeah, I added that, um, at something that is on some agendas for, for boards, and I thought we might as well.
Sure. Allison?
Oh.
No, any, any public comments?
Oh, no.
Okay, that's fine. Moving on, um, treasures report. We have no significant transactions. I did ask Shirley and Mary to do the investment we discussed. Um, but I'm waiting to hear back from them about it being finalized, so. That will be a significant transaction when we hear about it.
Uh-huh.
Friends report?
The friends are buying the ice cream for the big birthday party on Saturday. And, uh, I think I mentioned to you, Kevin, you're gonna bring a cooler because they don't have the cooler bag, then I'll bring a cooler, so, so we're good with that. Um, then the friends also decided that we needed some more stuff and, uh, Deb Roder and Ann Park and I have worked to put together information for some posters that we're gonna do, and I thought, well, maybe you guys would be interested in this too.
When you say you guys, like all of.
You trustees. So this is, this is gonna be on the one poster. I think there's one, an extra one there for Shelley too. Um, the, you know, important dates in the library. I mean, did you know we got our first telephone in nineteen sixty-six?
Wow.
Well.
And, uh, Kevin, I hope you'll please to know that, uh, Sylvia, Sylvia Warren's salary for many years, all the time that she was librarian for fifty years, never exceeded fifty dollars.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
Service to her community.
But, and then, but Deb Roder had gone in and done a whole lot more, so, uh, this is an even more.
In-depth.
In-depth, in-depth timeline. So we're gonna have a poster with the librarians, and I don't know, they were gonna work on pictures today. And a timeline, and then just kind of, I think that, I think that that was gonna be two posters, but anyway, she working on that for our, uh, but it has been kind of fun to go through. Through, uh, this one, the one I just sent you, the Deb's, uh, is missing the bookmobile, so we had to go back and put the bookmobile in, which was two thousand.
State bookwagon service.
Yeah, so you're gonna have all the directors, a picture of all of the directors, including.
We hope so, yeah.
Our, our rent.
We got those photos to Cindy and Debbie today.
Good.
Working on it.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Cindy Ortega is the, the poster queen, so we learned that when we did posters for the Fourth of July. Ours looked like kindergarteners had done them, and hers looked professional, so she's never gonna get rid of that. Then I had the idea that we would love to have someone dress up as Dorothy Alling and lead a storytime on Saturday afternoon. Well, Cindy, Cindy, Cindy will do it. Cindy would do it, but she's not gonna be here. Isn't there someone else we can?
We've been trying to track someone down, but we just haven't been able to find someone.
What does that mean?
So.
Well, where'd you get the costume?
Well, she has to just dress up as something in the thirties or forties. I mean, that.
The dress out of the historical.
But if you can think of anybody, I think that'd be kind of fun.
Bonnie was trying to, we were trying to brainstorm, we just couldn't come up with someone.
What about Danielle? She loves storytime.
Yeah, did someone ask her?
Um, I haven't now. We could.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
We could see if we could make that happen.
She's also game for lots of fun.
She does, and she doesn't mind wearing different costumes.
Yes.
I mean, I just think it'd be kind of fun to add to, and you're bringing the games, right?
I am bringing the games, and, um, are there volunteers to help with the games? Yeah, I, so I, I hardly have volunteers, but I recruited a number of our subs to come in and actually help out that day. So we'll have three or four extra hands on deck.
Okay.
Um, and Allison and I will both be here. Allison's along, and I'll be here.
What are these games? Cause it was like, what was it?
It's a trunk, it's a trunk of games that, uh, we have at the Historical Society that we crack out for school groups and stuff like that, but, um, uh, old fashioned stilts, don't worry, they're like really short. Um, stilts, um, graces, which are these hoops with ribbons on them, and you, these are the, those are the ones that actually need someone to show kids how to use them, or they just turn them into like weird projectiles. Uh, and you, you put, you stick two sticks through the hoops crossed, and then you pull your hands apart, and the sticks shoot the, and you can.
Are you supposed to catch?
And then you catch it, and you catch it on the two sticks, and then you throw it on the two sticks, and you catch it on, and it's, it looks graceful, and it's the game of graces.
They're definitely just.
Even with a guide, there's, there's, it's just gonna be projectile.
So, I mean, they are thrown.
Yeah.
Theoretically.
Like those things with the ball that you have to catch in the cup?
I think there's some cup and ball, everyone knows how to use those. Um, there's a beanbag toss game similar to, similar to cornhole, um, and hoops for rolling, rolling hoops with a stick. Um, I think all of our bean, all of our, um, burlap bags got torn, so we're getting more from Greenmount Coffee Roasters, but I probably won't have those for beanbag races. Um, but that's a kind of a flavor of what the, what they are.
Oh, that's.
Good, so we're pretty set with that, aren't we? So who's doing the, sending up the sticks with the library?
Bonnie and I will be doing that, and John, the project architect, and I'll be marking out the outline of the building and the parking lot on Friday afternoon. I'm trying to do it as late as possible in case they know.
About rain, but.
It's looking pretty good, whether.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, um, fingers crossed. We did wanna though, I think we, we talked about potentially asking Steve if he would give the introduction to the event. Um, we'll write something up.
Okay, right.
Happy to, I was, I need speaking, I need speaking points, but we just want. Introduction that you gave it, um, about your personal history of the library, and, um, but it's gonna be fairly minimal, just kind of welcoming people, letting them know the order of the events, and then, uh, introducing the town band, essentially. Um, so, but I'm happy, I, I can provide those, those points, but if you're gonna be there.
I will be there, and I'm happy to do that.
Oh, thank you.
And I think you should start the happy birthday.
I'm glad to. Um, uh, people need to chime in quickly. We're gonna say one, two, three.
Happy, is she gonna be here? Cause she's, she's got beautiful.
Oh, um.
Who?
Well, uh. No, Bella won't be here. She would be so good at it. She sings opera. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Problem is. Started a little high. Yeah, that's not set in the bar. So, oh, that's great.
And so, and the, the Historical Society event is in the morning.
That's in the morning.
And then the party's in the afternoon.
Yes, and there's an hour between, so we'll have some time to break down here and then set up any last minute things we need to set up outside. I'm thinking we start to show up around noon to set stuff up outside. It won't take that long.
Okay, and I'll, I'll double check with the Ben and Jerry's lady about getting this.
And the cake, I haven't heard back from Brian, but I think there's enough time. If I don't hear from him on Tuesday, then I'll just go to Hannaford and talk to the bakery people directly.
Yeah, bring me email.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great, thank you.
It's okay.
I chose chocolate. It gets easier.
Um, then I just had one other question for you, Steve, when we were doing all this, Ann Park is trying to, um, uh, identify major gifts to the library and who, who provided them. Do you know who was behind the bench for your grandmother?
No, but I can ask my mom.
Yeah, we thought it was your family, but we're not.
Could have been.
Could have been, okay. If, that would be great if you'd just.
Yeah, I'll send her a text right now.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, and then my last friend's thing is, um, one of our next, we need to do the MOU with the friends.
Yeah, I'm, I need to get a digital copy of that because I just have the print copy, so, so I can provide it to the board.
Oh.
I just have the actual one that was handed out, and I wrote on it, so if I can get a digital copy, I'll pass.
I think it's, I better talk to Julian.
Yeah, that's a good idea, so.
So that's, like, that kind of got the friends and the birthday party all in there together, so we're all set.
That's great.
Okay, that's it.
Every time a, a friend comes around from my kids, I say, we're going to the library birthday party, and they tell me, what? And I say, there will be cake, and they say, I'll be there. I'm trying to drum up.
Good.
Excitement among the young.
Do you think the observer will put something in again this week about the?
I don't know if they'll put something in this week, although we will certainly, we haven't put it out on Front Porch Forum or our social media yet, so we're gonna do that, or we're gonna do the roadside sign. Um, we're hoping that'll help, and we've been handing out things at the front desk to people.
Good, good.
Can, um, the Facebook posts be shared within Facebook? Put it on the Williston parents.
Okay, we'll have to go back.
Page for people who aren't.
Thank you.
Friends of the library.
Mm-hmm, good idea.
Just if you can let me know when you do it, cause I don't really go on Facebook, but.
Okay, probably.
Sometimes I go on to check the parents thing.
I think Wednesday we'll do it.
Okay, yeah, so then I'll, I'll share it alone. Um, okay. Current budget report.
Sorry, I have not.
Oh, you don't have that.
I have nothing about what we spent. Click it on the agenda, cause it's important to keep it there.
Yeah.
We have no information yet from Mary as to what we spent this fiscal year. We do track everything, but we wait for her reports, and they're still finishing the last fiscal year. So, well, it'll, um, get here eventually.
You've kind of got used to being a few months behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we used to have it like the, the month we met, and then it got two months behind, and that's three months behind, and we were told it was gonna get better or not worse.
I like it. I mean, I think there's a little bit of catch-up time, and then I think it will be better.
Only it's because this is the year one, so.
Yeah, this is, um, when I worked for the city, this is what's referred to as month thirteen, and month thirteen is usually like July, August, and September, and it's the wrap-up of the previous fiscal year, so we'll just assume they're in month thirteen.
Yeah, that's a good assumption.
So hopefully Bella be getting months one, two, three, and four at the next meeting. Now, probably you wanted to.
There is some good news. The town has hired an HR director. Uh, she's gonna start next week, and our fiscal office has been doing the HR work as well.
Oh.
So this is gonna free them up to really focus.
Yeah, I think that.
They've been doing job and a half, really, there's two of them, so this is, it's gonna be good.
Yeah.
So that's, that was good news to hear that they found something good for that.
Um, can I just ask, with the tracking that you're, you do internally, does it appear on track?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, all is, all is good. Uh, we have five different spreadsheets that we track our budgets on. Uh, the staff have access to the ones that, so they can see the budgets that they spend for collection development or for supplies. Uh, and it helps us, you know, stay on track. Um, and I know from previous towns that you can get a report about how much you've spent. Um, I think the town is more careful here to, to really not put that number out until they're certain that that's all the bills they're gonna pay, which is why I think it's a little slower. Uh, but the accounting software we use, Nemrick, um, does, it, it is keeping track of what we're spending when they pay the invoices, because they're COVID. Um, so we could have a discussion about that in the future, if it ends up being like four months or five months, or something that really doesn't give us the ability to manage our budget in a viscerally prudent manner. So.
Okay. My proceeds report. Our statistics.
Yes, um, thank you, Charlotte, for reminding me that I ought to provide these. Uh, I had, didn't have them last meeting, but Roki, um, assembles our statistic, our patron service librarian. And so this is our, um, August year-over-year statistics, so compares this August to last August, and it's up in some areas and down in some areas. I think I wanted to note that the, the youth programs was down a lot because we, there were a few events that we either didn't participate in or participated in a little less, or there were fewer people at touch a truck we participated in, but there weren't as many people there this year for some reason. Um, so that was, that was a significant number that was down. Um, our adult programs were up because we happen to have a lot more adult programs, so I'm not concerned about either, you know, looking lower or looking higher, it's just gonna average out over, over time. Um, but overall, we're, we're seeing, um, a good amount of usage. Our registered patrons is now over five thousand, which is cool. Um, so.
Does anyone want them shared?
Or? Oh, I can share them online if you'd like. Um, yeah, I, we just talked through them. I was just gonna say, I've, I've gotten spoiled of not printing them out and just relying on the, uh,
They do.
Stuff on the screen. Oh, it's not a problem. Let me see if I can, I've got them all on here, and.
Easier to ask questions if you can see.
That is a good point. This should be them. And we don't need to share because nobody's joining us online at the moment, so we can just look out. Um, I did want to point out this, there's a disparity you see between active patrons and registered patrons, so my understanding is this is the number of patrons who actually use the library this month. Um, so people who use, who actively use the library in August. It's not everybody uses the library every month. Um, but I thought that was an interesting thing to note.
Thirty-one days, that's a lot of people.
It is, yeah, it is, yep. So we got, we had six thousand people walk into the building. Um, and, uh, so a lot of folks come in and they don't necessarily check out a book. I'm sure a lot of those are kids coming in after school. Um, although it's August, so this would have been kids coming in for some reading. Um, but yeah, circulation about the same. Our electronic circulation continues to be a higher percentage every year. That's gone up a little bit. Uh, I think that there's really two reasons for that. Uh, one of them is that people are learning how to use the online collection, or building a larger one, and the other is we have no space to add more material. So we can't increase our print circulation. There's really not any good way to do that, because when you can't increase your collection, it's very hard to have more circulation when you already had a lot. Um, so that's why I think if we had more space to not have to withdraw as many books as we have to withdraw now, um, I think that we wouldn't see as much of an increase in that electronic circulation number as we are year over year, so.
Another reason for the new edition.
Yes, for sure, for sure. Uh, but any, uh, any questions on the, the numbers? Of course, yeah, please.
Oh. I saw something in the news recently about, uh, Kindle Unlimited books being available to libraries. And just wondering if you think that's gonna be something that will potentially help increase circulation electronically?
So if, if we, if we have the ability to buy into that, I think it certainly could. Uh, that's a whole different, um, set of material than what we have right now. Uh, we tend to buy things through our state consortia, um, and so we would need to see that come available through, um, Dreammount Library Consortium or the Department of Libraries to sort of make it affordable, but I could see that, yeah. Um, we have added, uh, collections like Hoopla is a collection of additional, um, year, um, titles. Uh, the E-magazines was an addition. Um, and every time we, we add something like that, we do see typically a bump unless we bought something we shouldn't have. Um, but our, our biggest one is the Overdrive collections. Um, I don't know if you have the Libby app?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, it's, that's our biggest, it's both what we spend the most on in terms of paying for it and what we see the most circulation for. Um, so it'll be interesting to see if Kindle, um, and Kindle Unlimited somehow tries to compete with that, cause Overdrive for a long time was the only game in town.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, good question.
I did see something about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Overdrive and Libby are the same thing.
They are, same thing. Libby's the app that Overdrive owns, that's right.
Well, I think has, has Kindle Unlimited is so much advertising, and has so many authors go like direct to Kindle Unlimited, so it creates such, um, more access. Some really, uh, some really fun stuff, so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, the website's been a lot of action. Do you think that's because of the articles and the expansion or something?
Yes, I do. I think that that is, um, a hundred percent why we're seeing a lot, um, because the library's been in the news. Uh, and let me just show you, we've been revising the website, um, for the project. Uh, so we're, it's, it's, uh, in, in progress, but if you go to the library expansion, um, you'll see that we now have some images on that page. So you can see some of the images. We also have the sort of general case statement about why this project is being considered.
Oh, yeah, that's, could that be for the sideline?
Yeah, so that kind of scrolls through, um, and you can see it, and some of those, and then the benefits, and of course the cost. Um, and I did add how much we anticipated fundraising. That was one of the sort of call-outs we saw on Front Porch Forum, and I thought that was smart, that we ought to say this is what the consultant thought we could raise. Um, so, so the website has been revised. We saw all the other information from the committee, um, that did a lot of work on this, but we put some of this front and center, so, um, it'll be ready, uh, when we, if we go forward with that. That convo for people to look at and learn about, so.
Can you go back to the first page of the website?
Sure.
Can someone tell me why I have trouble getting to the card catalog every time? I.
I just click on the go. I click on the go.
Is that what I do?
That's what I do.
I fucks around with that, and I can't figure out, I think, am I stupid? I can't fit it up with the.
Cause there used to be the, like, there used to be a link where you could go to your, your, um,
I don't know.
You could link to your card directly, and then you could browse, but I do go, and it, and it takes me to the catalog, and then I have to click, um, my name, or I'll click up on the top, and then it'll be my name, like the sign-in, and that's what it shows. That's what it shows. And so then you can browse, and you can do all the stuff that you did, but then you, you can sign in from there, that's attractive.
Well, I don't sign in necessarily.
I sign in from the front page. I hit my.
I don't have that, that yellow button.
Everybody's got that yellow one.
I think I do.
Okay, I'm gonna try to experiment here. Let's see.
I don't, I thought, I thought you were gonna say, are you stupid? You just hit here, but.
Let's try a little experiment. So, um, a lot of websites, uh, are different as you make the browser smaller.
Yeah, cause I'm on the iPad. I'm always on my iPad.
Make it smaller and see how small we need to get before it disappears.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, there.
And that's, and that's exactly what mine looks like, cause my goal is underneath.
Yeah, so Kim, Kim is out this week, but she's gonna be able to solve that, because that is something that should, you shouldn't get smaller like that. That's not great web design.
Yeah.
Yeah, in terms of a dot. Yeah, that should not be happening.
I couldn't click, oh, it's just a dot.
Yeah, if he goes, he goes to the size of a, a pad, it's, it's a dot, it's a yellow dot.
That said, if, well, you probably, you'd read very fast, but if you ever have them say you've happened, like, if you get the emails, you have an item that's due, or, you know, you click on it, and it takes you straight to your login, and I always go to the library website by searching for my last item to. Because I always wanna check, should I renew something? Oh.
So we need to, um, Kim and I will work on this, cause that's really a bug you discovered. Um, this should, this should look good and be functional on a tablet or on a phone. Um, so really, we need to look at the widths, and instead of having that get smaller like that, it's probably a column, it needs to look like that, where you have.
Oh, yeah.
So this is the phone, and this is.
This is so great.
So, so, but every website out there now that's worth its salt is designed for a phone, a tablet, and a computer, and the tablet isn't working like it should. So, good eyes.
That said, if anyone were online, if this were being shared, everyone would be learning.
I don't do it on my.
Just saying it. Being huge.
Well, I'm glad I asked this.
Great question. You can also press the go button.
As long as we have this up, though, I want to invite you all to this talk.
Yeah. I double-checked the date of that a couple.
So not only, we're gonna have free chocolate that is featured in this book, which is this chocolate that he goes and, um, tries to discover with people who are trying to bring back sort of artisan, not artisan chocolate, but the original varieties of chocolate from, um, the Amazon region. So, uh, uh, Rowan Jigerson's won two James Beard awards for his writing, and he happens to be a realter. Um, so it's gonna be not just a talk, but also you'll get to try some of the chocolate featured in this book, so highly, highly recommend.
So there, and there's no registration?
No, no, it's gonna be in this room, we're hoping we have fewer.
It would be like the beavers.
So I don't know how much chocolate to buy, but I'm gonna buy, over-buy, I think, just in case, so. All right, thank you for that feedback, though. I've noted that, and Kim and I will tackle it.
Um, next up is the staff support. Do you want me to post about the treasures?
Allison, okay. Um, I'm Allison Banquet. I'm the cataloging technical services librarian, so my main duties are adding mater, new materials to the catalog.
Cataloging, sorry, Allison.
Uh, cataloging technical services.
Okay.
Librarian. Um, my main duties are adding materials to the catalog, and, uh, when things are weighted, taking them, taking them out of the catalog, which we do have to do often, as Kevin said, to make space. Um, and, uh, I label them with spine labels with the call numbers, and I also select new books for the adult biography section and the adult graphic novel section. Um, so recently, we have had two new student workers start, so I train them in book processing, cause that's the main thing the students do in relation to my position. Um, they do all the stamping and putting covers on books and things like that, so. Um, and we also do have a sub who does it, uh, like, I guess two subs who do it often as well. And, uh, but recently, I've done some re-cataloging of different areas. Um, I re-cataloged the two hundred section because there is an alternate Dewey numbering system for it that is optional to use. It makes it so the religions are rough, in roughly chronological order. Um, other libraries have used this alternate system, so I've attended like workshop presentations on it. Um, one of them even created like a crosswalk with the old number and how that translates to the new number, so, um, I pulled, it was only one shelving unit, so I could do it in a couple hours. I just pulled the books off, looked up the old number, translated to the new number, and printed a new spine label and put them back on.
So it just makes it easier for a patron to find stuff?
Yeah, some, before some religions would be kind of all squished together, and now there's more space. It's just more, it's just roughly chronological order. Um, so I'll keep doing that with all the new adult two hundreds books that come in, and I can do that also on the youth section. Um, probably now would be a good time to do that after summer reading and everything. Um, I also re-cataloged the nine twenties, which is collective biography. Um, Jane had asked me to do that because it was, they're kind of hanging out at the end of the nine hundreds, kind of in no man's land, but before the actual, like, the B biography section starts. So I re-cataloged them to their subject areas, or if it was a family, like a book about the Roosevelts, I cataloged it under B Roosevelt. Um, and there's only about two shelves of those, but at least now there's some more space in that area. Um, and also I recently weighted the one hundreds and the two hundred section, um, and ordered some new titles for those sections as well. And the other main thing I'm working on right now is inventory, uh, with volunteers. The volunteers um, basically scan every item in, in the library. We do different sections at a time, and then I, they use a handheld barcode scanner, and then I can run a report in the catalog, an inventory report, and it will return any items that are supposed to be in a certain range of numbers but weren't scanned, so then we can see sometimes we can find them, but they're misshelved, they're getting repaired, or maybe we just don't know where they are. So we've done all the youth areas finished. The adult area is mostly finished except for some of the nonfiction. Um, Deb Roder, the former cataloging librarian who was my supervisor, has helped with this, and she did the, she did inventory on the bookmobile this past week with Sarah. That's done.
Deb Smith busy here.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just looking for stuff to do.
And, um, so the main part that's still to be done is the Vermont Room, but that's not too big. And as of right now, there's about eighty-ish titles missing out of all, everything we scanned so far. That's really not that bad. So, yeah.
So do you think some of those missing things will just stay missing?
They might, they might have been taken out of the library without being checked out. So basically, once I get the list done and we're done with the inventory scanning part, we usually, in the past, we've had the students look one more time. Like, I can look and make sure, you know, the last seen date, you know, it hasn't come in in between the time we've done the inventory, and then, and then the students might look one more time, and then we could just give the list to the people who are responsible for collection development, like, do you want our places? Do you wanna just take it out of the catalog? Um, that's what the next step would be, yeah. That's what the next step would be. Yeah. So some of them might be lost. Some of them might be. Check, I mean, out with patrons who just forgot to check them out.
And that happens.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
People leaving without checking out. Sometimes, uh, yeah, it's, it depends on the patron or. It could be our mistake too. I mean, scanning, sometimes it beeps and you're not in the right area. So, I mean. Usually people bring them back. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we try, Christine is always, you know, reminding us, you know, go slow, look at the screen, but. Yeah, mistakes happen. Or if things get mishelled, it's almost as like being lost, like.
Yeah.
You have to try to find it. So, um, but yeah, we'll do one more check. Once we have the list and then I'll figure out what to do. And I'm also working on. The demographics part of the strategic planning, um. With, um, Bonnie. And, uh, we did recently purchase Collection HQ to analyze our collection. Um, for diversity and, uh. Kim helped send them our information and now they've sent back a spreadsheet where I'm. Filling out like what this call number means this and like, you know, these call numbers have young adult. Um, materials in it or juvenile or adult. And then once we send that back, it takes a couple months and then we'll get the results of the diversity audit.
So who is helping you with that?
Um, well, the company we use is Collection HQ is the name of the company.
And you said Bonnie was helping?
Bonnie is the other person on that, um. On that goal and Kim is also helping, cause we had to send them like an extract of what, I don't know. The terms, but like, you know, all the information. What our holdings and that.
Addressing a specific element of this future plan.
Yeah.
To do that sort of audit and then try to see the areas where we might be falling short in terms of a lot of different. Um, aspects of diversity, like ethnic, religious, socioeconomic. Um, and, and what? I think there's nine different elements. Um, so you'll get a report about how your collection stacks up versus other collections nationally. Um, and also. Not just the number of items, but your circulation. You can see if you have heavy circulation in a particular area, maybe you should buy more. In that area to meet the needs of your, uh, patrons. It's a cool product and there's a lot of backend work that has to be done first.
Yeah, that's interesting.
And, uh, the other role I'm working on, uh, Roki's working with me on it is. Demographics. So, so far I've looked at the, the draft. Town, um, plan and I pulled out demographic info that might be useful and then. We're gonna meet again and figure out what else we can do. To get demographic info that's useful to the library and it could also relate to the diversity audit, like. Our population looks like this, so we, we should have, uh, more things in this area or. Yeah.
Keeps you busy. And you're hard time, right?
Yes, I am hard time.
It sounds like you're doing full-time work.
Yes, I know, I know. I'll tell you, when you told, at first I thought that you were doing this. So now every Monday I, I browse. Because I know that that's what you've gone through. And then I wait a couple days and I'm like, I'm like, oh. Every Thursday I could just see if something new has gone up.
Or have filled up again. For a while there was. They were pretty.
People are hitting them hard.
That's right.
Um, so people hit them hard tonight, I will. To get a book of like.
Yeah.
It's spread out.
The new Dan Brown?
Not there anymore.
Well, no, but it's, uh, it's, uh, maybe I've got it on.
Uh, there were, there were. Well, I'm in, on, in the queue.
Yeah. I also hit the, the, the website and I just go to the. The, the catalog and, you know, listed from newest on. Kind of keep, look, keep my eye on that and throw things on hold as best I can. I'll give you, usually I max out my holes.
This is not an insider tip, but, um, are, we do have some titles in Overdrive Libby. That are on a cost per circ basis where we have a small amount of money that every month. Um, we have unlimited access to titles until we've spent that amount of money. So the first of the month, you're gonna find more things on Libby or Overdrive. Check on the first, cause you get some of those good titles that anybody can check out. For those who wanna watch the recording. If you're that much of a library lover, that's got a good ten.
I, I do a book a week of Libby, so.
Yeah.
Check the brand first.
Check for your newest things early.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. Yeah.
Still working my way through my back, my huge back.
The bookstore box, yeah. So it's a good for when you travel. Well, though, if you do electronic, it doesn't matter. Well, it's cool to tell Alison what you do. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Village Vibrancy Library Expansion Renovation Project.
So this is a standing item on the agenda now, and I really don't have much of an update from our last meeting, um, because it's been postponed as. Um, Eric has welcomed the second child to his family, so he's on paternity leave. Um, they're, uh, happy and healthy, um, young girl and. Uh, so we've postponed, the select board has postponed that agenda item for their consideration until October seventh. That's when that'll be, they'll be considering that again.
Plan on going to that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that'd be good. The, the feeling I got at the last meeting was they do plan to go forward with it. Yeah, so, uh, Shirley has any questions of ours, I'll be sure to answer them. I know that she was tasked with. Doing some more analysis of the capital budget, uh, for the town as far as the future is, is reasonable. Um, and so that was, a couple of select board members wanted that. Um, select board member Aisham also did want us to outline the building and the parking lot. Uh, so people could see what it would look like and we're, we're gonna be doing that Friday.
Um, so I think that's really helpful.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people look at the plans and think it's a lot bigger. Than it actually is, just because the plan is so zoomed in. It seems huge, but in reality, it's actually not.
And it's a perfect opportunity to do that with the.
I think also because of the nature of it, how it's gonna be. The two. Built into the slope of the land. The foot, as we've discussed, the footprint is much smaller than it would have been otherwise. So I think that, yeah.
Um, I've had a couple of folks think that the addition was gonna replace the space. Too. They thought that was gonna be what we saw from, um, Front Porch Road and so I've had the. Once I told them, no, that's going on the back. This building's staying the same in terms of its footprint's being renovated. They were like, oh, well, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Well, and, and you should probably share that you went through this, the, um, town's new plan with.
Oh, yes. Um, so the, the towns, uh, they did adopt the town plan.
Oh, okay.
Much as it was, um, in Dracula. Uh, and they have prioritized recommendations in the town plan, um, both. Or they have medium, short and long-term goals. And then they have dollar, relative dollar figures that go from one dollar. To four dollar signs.
Um, review.
Yes, exactly. Like in, yes, like in, in the Michelin guide. And so, um, I, well, I wanted to go through based on the select words. Question about what we have upcoming for capital projects. Um, and there were only three items in the town plan that both had a short-term timeframe and. At least two, three or more dollar signs. The library's a four-dollar sign project. Um, and, uh, those both had to do with town infrastructure. Um, one of them had to do with, um, Allen Brook. And another had to do with stormwater. Um, they weren't buildings. So another, an example of another project that people know about is. The community center, which was the other part of that, um, feasibility. That is a. Um, long, long-term project that also has four dollars. So there is, the, the point of that exercise was to see what kind of priorities. Uh, the town set in their town plan that they adopted, um, in August. Because they were talking about what are our priorities? You know, our priorities. Well, you know, it was past the town plan. And the, this is the only building that's been identified as a priority.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it's, it's a meaningful exercise to do. I did share it with our, with our town manager, um, but I think it's, there, the select word has to be cautious. Uh, and they are being cautious with long-term spending. Um, so I think that's why they're, they're taking it slow. It's a reasonable approach. But I also thought someone should point out the town plan does have something towards that.
Those two goals are working together, you know, like the, our village vibrancy is in the town planner.
Just, just, uh, if you're interested for this research, the first edition. Was cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plus a hundred thousand dollar grant we got.
Wow.
It was, it was a lot of money at the time.
Yeah.
That is a lot of money.
It's amazing.
I. That. The competing, not competing priorities, they're all priorities. Um, and they're all things that need to get done. But. You know, the idea that. I mean, I understand the idea of, I wanna know what we, what else we need to spend money on because there are gonna be a lot of asks. At the same time. I think you mentioned like, someone mentioned this was kind of like a shovel-ready thing, cause we had done all this planning already.
True.
If you put everything off, then everything comes due at the same time.
Yeah.
So given that we are at this. This place, it seems like it is more responsible to get going on it than to try to. All of a sudden you've got, you know, even more things in your shopping cart.
Or at least, you know, get input from the voters after they've been able to look at this.
Just worried it's gonna get conflated with, cause the school district's now asking, they've decided they're gonna put a bond on town meeting day ballot for.
Yeah.
Much more than we're asking, or is it about, was it like fifteen, sixteen, seven million, something?
Oh, no, thirteen? I don't know, but.
It was over ten.
But that was spread out over all four towns.
It is, but there's a perception, right? You go to the ballot and you're like, oh, I gotta, do I vote for this bond? Do I vote for that bond?
Well, I have to choose.
Even though it's apples and oranges.
Yeah, it was very sad when I saw that headline.
Well, I, I, I honestly, I've heard from a lot of people on all sides of it, and I think there's a general understanding that the library needs more space. I think that, you know, should the select board move it forward, the votes are really gonna be about, do they need that much more space or, or? Are voters gonna say, no, we want you to scale it back? But I haven't heard anybody say the library doesn't need your space.
Yeah.
So I think if we, you know, regardless of what happens for the vote, we, our goal is to give as much. Information to people as possible about the project and the cost. And hopefully do some fundraising when we get that awareness out there. And if we end up with a, with a no vote, then that, that, I don't think that means they don't want the library to expand. I think it means they want to scale. Um, so, but I think it makes sense. They've all said, let's put it forward and see what voters say, cause it's a good plan. It's just, you know, nothing is cheap these days.
Yeah.
But, but get, not getting any cheaper either.
They say no, scale it back and then you'd scale it back to half the size it was and still fifty.
But then, then the fact that they've heard you or they, you know, yeah, okay. Well.
Yes. Just an idea that's coming to me that as you're trying to. Build awareness within the community of doing this, I wonder if there's an opportunity to collect stories from folks. Of how the library has impacted them or how it's been important to them. And maybe you all have already. Done this and I'm like way behind on.
No, but I think it's a good idea.
Um, but being able to ask folks for stories now and start publishing those now to really build up. That energy and get people like, oh wow, like the library is important to us. And like, look, this is how and. How it makes a difference. And it could go a long way when it comes time for voting day.
We've, we've talked about doing it, but we haven't done it. We should do it.
I think when they were doing the whole. Getting feedback phase way back when.
Oh, right.
Yeah, with the scoping study, people were. Saying what was important to them and then we did that whole survey. But there's a difference between us bringing in information and then us bringing in information and sharing.
Yeah.
Sharing them. Yeah, and you can even ask people at the, at the front.
At a party.
Right, at the party, at the front, you know, at, and ongoing at the desk, like, you know, what's, what's your favorite memory?
Yeah.
Of the library, right? It doesn't even have to be huge.
Um, everybody has a library.
Yeah, the library memory, a library story and start like collecting and publishing and. Is there? Is there a way to put something on Dottie that's like? Like a changing message, kind of like you've got the, the funny puns that are at the front door. Like a change, like a place where you could like put up something new and then each week a different quote could go around town.
Yeah, get all those digital signs.
I'm definitely not thinking digital, like, you know. Like a dry erase board, but not. Well, and even on your website, right? Like we can change something on the website, right? And then you can get a section going in the observer of like, you know, weekly story, memory, impact moment or whatever. Would they allow? If they allow.
Well, you know, I think the televisions do that too. When we started those, where they have the pictures of the thing. Things are, are powerful.
Yeah. But that could be here, you mean those?
Yeah, there's one at the front desk, but.
Yeah, well, people could write letters to the editor. When it, when we start getting, like, anyone who makes a donation, say, oh, also, if you wanna just write a letter to the editor. That talks about the library and that could be done.
What the library means to you.
Yeah. But like, not just.
Make it part of the, of the library column even, you know, every.
Yeah.
Yeah, the part that we're already given, if they'll notice. Yeah, put it in there.
Yeah.
Uh, they're desperate for content.
Do you wanna write something?
And I'm also wondering too, with the party on Saturday, um. Do you have any of the library staff who are really good with social media? And their phones, that they could even take videos that folks are willing, um, like, it was library B two. But to your point of putting stuff up and having it run like on. The videos, it could be a thing too. You may not be ready to execute on Saturday for that, but.
Enough other programs during the course of the year that.
We can start getting people to sign up who are interested or sharing, yeah.
Or even just have pieces of paper out, like where people can write something down. Like if you print out like a. Yeah, but you have all these little things and, you know, just with at a table and you, and then they put it in the box. And then you have at least like a. Quote here, a quote there, and they can say their name or they can make it anonymous, but, or just like their age or.
So, um, at the library in Shelburne for our case statement for fundraising, which was like an eight-page. Document that we shared with potential donors, at the last page had different. Basically what we're talking about, different stories from people in the community about what the library meant to them. Um, and we had gathered those over time. And so it was useful for the fundraising part of things, um, in addition to that. Awareness of what the library does. Uh, I think it's, I think it's important to start doing that. So I will think about the list to do it and, um, and start gathering that, those stories.
And on the, the website, the section where it has like upcoming events, like, you know, little thing, like. Each week, like a, or a couple of them could rotate in and out of those kinds of things.
So would you mind helping them close?
Okay, oh, right.
We're a little short staffed. Thank you so much.
Anything else on village vibrancy?
Um, no, just that, that's the meeting.
Um, new business. These are the policies you send out.
Yes, and, uh, these really are related to the potential capital campaign, um, and. One of them is a confidentiality policy, um, just making sure that folks who donate, um, or potential donors, their information's being kept. Confidential. Um, I realize I'm even Ellen Memorial, so there's already an edit. Uh, and then, um, the gift acceptance policy, we do have one right now. This is a much expanded gift acceptance policy. Um, and, uh, this, the language in these comes from our fundraising feasibility consultants, uh, who. This was one of their recommendations and these were their sort of draft policies. There was, I didn't modify it.
And they look fine. There was one typo in the, um, gift acceptance that is actually material to its meaning.
Oh.
Uh, and it's the, uh, gifts of real, um, property. Um, there's a, a spot in it that says or, uh, where it should say of.
Okay, oh, yes.
Um.
Okay. I can find, oh yeah, I see it in number five, last sentence.
Yes.
Yep.
Um because if you read it as it is, it means that anything valued at five thousand or more has to come through the D M O. Board, and we don't wanna do that. We want that to be of.
Yes. Yep, yeah, thank you.
The other one, the other gift policy dealt more with. Things like.
Yes.
The picture, is that a different policy than this one?
I feel like it is, um.
I mean, so we have two, I mean.
Yeah.
What, what do we do when someone says, oh, you'd like a picture of Dorothy Allen's great niece, I'm, you know?
Right.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, that type of thing. Yeah, I mean, I think that those things are important too.
And that's a question, I think, for the board, um do you want me to roll that in? To this policy, or should we keep them separate and add a heading to the other policy? That are, that is more, that's more deals with people giving books. For the library for the book sale, or giving like that artwork, but they're not, this is more gift. In terms of a capital campaign, I think, more charitable giving, and not. Sort of smaller donations.
Hard, I, yeah.
I've seen it both ways.
It is, for for us, it's, we keep them separate because we have the, the gifts of stuff falls under our collections policy, whereas. Gifts of asset, as it were, is called the gift acceptance policy, so that's how we separate it. So I don't know if we wanna put that kinda stuff. Under our. Collections development policy, or or, you know, house, house it in a different place. And then keep this as it is.
Yeah, I mean, we need this one, but I think we also need the other one when someone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, we take that other one and integrate it into a different policy.
Yeah.
So we're not combining with the fiscal stuff. Instead, we're putting it in with collections development or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's good to keep it separate.
I do too, but I just wanna make sure that we can toss the baby out with the bag.
Yeah, yeah.
I can do that, um I'll put it under the umbrella of collections management, um and then. We can consider that change, and then this would be its own thing, that makes sense.
And but should this specify, like? Capitals or, like, is this specific? Is everything in here necessarily capital?
I mean, maybe, other than gift, maybe there should be a different. No.
I don't think it really.
You think.
Honestly, it really matters, because what matters is is in it, not its title.
As long as we know.
So, cause this will ride after the capital, I mean, what if somebody wants to make a.
Right.
Give their property to us. You know, ten years from now, and that's just asset, so.
Yeah, good.
Do we have to approve these, or?
I think we wanna um.
Warn them.
Warn that we're going to approve them at the next meeting, and then I can make these changes and those other changes, but we're required to warn. For town policy before we actually vote for next time around, and we'll wanna go next time around because.
Then we wanna get started, yeah.
After October seventh, so that's why these are being presented. But those, that's all good feedback, um and I can make those changes and have them ready for October.
Thanks.
So do we, is this wanting me to be official, or is that just like, is it warm because it's in the note?
Do we, you don't need a motion. We only need a motion when we're accepting it, don't we think?
Yeah.
So it'll just be that it will.
I, don't we?
We move to consider, I mean, I can, how, how we be safe? I move, we move to consider it at the next working.
Oh, yes, we move to approve it.
Yeah.
We move to approve it at the next board meeting.
So Steve, do you move to?
Approve these at the next board meeting.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
And that's a, that's a bit too fine a point on it, but the select board actually isn't allowed to tell you how you can change your policies. You are by law able to set the policies of the library as you wish, and they can't make a policy about how you have to set your policies. That is also by statute. Is allowed to do, however, I think it's a courtesy to follow the select boards.
Yeah, I think it should, so.
Yeah.
Just.
If there's feedback over the next month.
That's why we have that M O U. Oh, my goodness. Odyssey and a half.
Yes, to do that. We actually should be doing that to be courteous, um but the law doesn't. This isn't a legal requirement that you want them to have that time to take.
Then this will be under old business next time. Yeah, so here we have the collection development policy. And there was a motion to approve the changes at the next meeting, and that was informal. Okay, and then then we did that, so, yeah, I think it's good to have that.
Yeah, I do too.
In the minutes, all right.
I was looking at the confidentiality.
Yes.
Do we have anything else?
Is confidentiality separate than the gift acceptance?
I move to be up, uh do both.
When you say with um a lot, you know, refrain from sending. That things electronically, and when you do use high security, is there like a? You know, one, a secure file transfer system here that you use for things of that?
Yeah, yeah, so I think the best way to do it is rather than send it as an email attachment. Um send a link to a shared um. Drive, like a Dropbox link or something like that, that is only accessible by the people whose emails you've shared it with. That way someone can't accidentally forward it. And the other part of that is that a lot of the documents that we share and are publicly available, should there be an inquiry. Um for those, and we are, there are rules around that, um in terms of what we're allowed to say. You know, we're not able to share that for X Y reason, um but we don't wanna get in a situation where people are asking for. Material that we wish was confidential, but we made unconfidential by sharing it to other. So we wanna be as protective of donors. Uh privacy as possible.
And is this something that will be like that, that then you bring to the staff? In like staff meetings, so they understand how.
Yes, yeah, and I think it'll be limited staff that'll work on the capital campaign, and it'll likely be uh Bonnie as the assistant director and myself. Will will be the the folks who are. Um unless there's an ask that we're making of a, of a potential donor that has personal relationship with a different staff member, which is possible. And then we would, we would kinda write them into this and have them read it and sign it.
And at the the select board meeting. You had mentioned that. Did everyone take what they had said to mean we should move forward with starting to? Have you moved forward with anything?
Yeah, so Carla and Barbara and I have been meeting um to talk about what a composition of a capital campaign committee might look like.
Okay.
Um and we do, and Charity, I should say, she also, she um has been part of that discussion. Uh and we do have a, both a general outline of the. Composition in terms of board members, staff members, friends, members of the community, and some specific idea of people we want to ask. Um and so we're, we're, we've got that lined up. Um and I think at our next library board meeting, uh. We would wanna pass the composition of that committee, um and then charge. The members of the library board who are on that committee with. Asking appropriate people specifically to fill those roles. So yes, the short answer is yes, we've been doing that work, um and are ready to move forward um with. Starting the capital campaign.
Thanks. How do you all feel about?
You've been working. I hope it keeps going.
Yeah. Thanks. Old business?
Yeah, operating capital.
Wait, do we need to?
Oh, yeah.
Was your motion?
For both.
For both, okay.
Yeah.
Good, 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 good.
Okay. Um, the budgets.
So this is, I think, really important, um and I, I would suggest. Not passing it at this meeting, but rather considering now, uh because this is really what's gonna fund our next July through June's. Um operating, and there is a ask that's built in here. Um I don't have the budget sheet for operational budgets yet. From um the fiscal office, so I haven't been able to create the budget in the format that. They typically wanted in, which is why I'm presenting it in the spreadsheet for them instead, but once I get that. Um I'm going, uh hoping that the board will approve us asking for an increase in our youth services.
You wanna put that one up there too?
Yes, thank you, um apologies that I'm not.
I mean, I did look at it, but.
And this is kind of the same thing that you talked about. You gave us a preview of this before.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, um so uh what's in here is additional money for salary and benefits outside of the. Three percent um across the board increase for inflation, um and. That would be to move uh our youth services assistant position from twenty seven hours a week to forty hours a week. The majority of the expenses in the hours, the majority is actually adding benefits. Um I feel like we do need those additional hours now. Uh we would definitely need them according to our staffing study if the new building was to move forward, so this would be preparing for that. We anticipated needing one full time and two part time people to keep that building. Um secure and safe with more than one level and more than one services. Uh and so um this would be setting us up for success there with having that full time position, and then we would just have to. Fill in with a couple of part time positions, but we do need it now as well. So that would be the big ask that would require additional paperwork uh and justification. Uh I did keep our book, books is really materials, we've kept the. Line item is books for some reason, but that's everything we spend on our collections, isn't that, that's line. I kept that steady. Um and I also reduced slightly the programming budget, instead of increasing it, because that youth services position would help us. Do more programming, so we wouldn't have to pay as much for programming. Yeah.
That's a great thing to highlight.
Yeah, yeah, it's sort of like we're looking at what, what, how does this affect us? Um and then uh there's a couple other items that are either steady or um. A slight decrease in our insurance based on the reality of what we've been paying for years is lower than what it's budgeted for. Um so it comes out to a little under a seven percent increase. Um again, I don't know, I don't have guidance on what the town wants us to propose yet, um and so I can't present that to you. But uh I expect that to come out very soon. And so we'll have more information. So this, I think, is really more informational. I do think at our next. Board meeting, we're gonna have a lot of business because we'll probably be wanting to pass um what our proposed budget is. And as you all know, what we do is we propose a budget and the select board has the option of adjusting that as they wish. Um so our, our power as board is to propose it, they can do, do what they want. Um to make sure that, you know, the town's being fiscally responsible and all of its departments are balanced, so.
Well, and and it seems previously that a lot of, like, this background information has already been discussed, like, you know, like, this is no surprise to Eric. And so I think that that's good, that it's, it's almost a done deal by the time it gets there. I mean, like. You kinda get your fingers crossed, but you know, you've got an idea about what the town has for its target for increasing and.
Just that we've had this so many times, you know, it takes like two, three years before they.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I, I was, I included the increases from the previous fiscal years to show that. That that sort of increase isn't um out of line with what we've asked for previous years. Uh I thought that was important, um but I, you know, if they have a bunch of things they're looking at that are gonna be baked in already to increase. Um this may not be the year for it, you know, that's why we are in control of the overall.
Yeah, but it's important to to start.
Our last edition of a full time, cause it's the benefits cost, not the hours, um was.
Took at least three.
Took at least three years. We got asked for it, it was shut down. We asked for it, they put it in, but actually the town budget was voted down. And then finally, in year three, we got it, so.
So letting them know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So um that, that's it. I just wanted to show you that, and once I get the paperwork from the town to be able to actually fill it out. Um we'll bring it to the next meeting for a vote of the board.
And that's the operating budget. This says capital, but there was no capital.
Right, our capital's pretty much the same, um we're asking for twenty five thousand dollars to go in the revolving fund. For the bookmobile replacement, which we expect um will need replacement in a couple of years. Um and that is, that's no different.
Yeah.
We're obviously not asking for any building capital or things to be said. So, yeah.
Yeah, there was talk a, a little bit, and maybe it'll come down to when, when, you know, if the bond passes or not, of building the delta of the bookmobile. Into the, into the.
Oh, right, right, right.
That's a, and that might be a hard thing to do.
Well, and it wouldn't be the focus of the bookmobile, because a lot of it has already been. The delta, oh, yeah, you're using those.
Using your math test.
Retired my math right now.
Yeah, you, it's just the, you know.
The difference, so, okay, good. Yeah, I think that would be great if we can do that.
Yeah.
It would be.
Especially since. It costs us.
It's passive.
Old business?
Yeah, but when I look at October seventh, will you summon, send out a reminder to the trustees to?
Yes.
So we have a good turnout.
And about what time? I think usually that's helpful.
And I, the last time we sort of all took a role in speaking to present what we had, where we were up to that point, I don't feel like we need to.
No.
That, I think being there is questions, it's smart, but I think it's gonna be more their decision, but it's always good to show up.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
So I will, yeah. Absolutely.
And then the birthday party, do you need people to be here at noon to help set up?
Um I think, I think noon um would be great if you're able to make it, yes, um I.
And then the party's one to three.
Yep, one to three. We're gonna do tours right at the end, because we're gonna have some stations inside the library that we're gonna highlight as well. But we don't wanna take a tour through when the library's open and mob people. Um so we'll, we'll have.
I think that's a good idea, anybody who wants to.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I drop this stuff off on Friday at some point, or just stash it somewhere in the library?
Yeah, absolutely. Put it in my office if there's, if I'm, I should be here.
It's a couple of trunks, so it can really kinda be on there.
Kathy also, and just told her what we had said about, you know, about one fifteen after the happy birthday.
Oh, good.
And um she's all okay with it. They, she had said that if it rains, that they probably, she goes, if it rains, it's, the band is canceled. And I'm like, well, we were thinking that there might be a possibility.
If it rains.
Think it's supposed to.
I don't suppose it rains for the next three months, so.
But yeah, so they're kind of in sync and stuff like that, and I think they'll be, you know, like, they'll be there and, you know.
I hope they put the sign up that they, you know, the town.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Are we, are we outlining the performance area too?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't run out of fluorescent down. Okay, so it's eight hundred linear feet.
Probably a little soggy to make them like, well, it's not soggy. We could have them perform in the circle.
So funny.
It's so much more space.
Yeah.
That is a good idea.
Um, okay, are we all set?
Yeah.
Eight, seventeen, eighteen, um a jury.